LeBron.
Here.
Kelly Crumbie.
Here.
Everybody's here. Hey, we're all here, so we do have a quorum present. Can I have verification that the meeting has been noticed?
It has.
And just a reminder that the work we do tonight, it follows our district mission statement, that we empower students to be college, community, career, and college-ready. That's our N's one mission statement. I think we need to reorder that, because I say it wrong every meeting. I just can't read it. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda. I do not have requests for any changes.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mary, a second by Mike, to approve the agenda as posted. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public conversation, recognitions, and correspondence. I don't have anything. Does the board? Somebody hand me something? No, I have a calendar. We're good. Heather Stanton has registered to address the board?
Yeah.
Yep. Oh, sorry. According to the agenda, you're first. So just a reminder, you have five minutes.
Yep.
Administration, I know you've received the guidelines, but I remind you, administration are guests at our meeting. This is the board's meeting. And respect the confidentiality of our staff or in our students, anything that you would consider to be your own performance evaluation. This is a public forum, and you are on live TV, so we prefer to handle that outside of this forum.
Hi, Mom.
So money.
So, great, welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so Discovery Charter School is awesome, and the best part of Discovery Charter is the experiential learning that a child gets in nature by seeing, smelling, and hearing, and touching. They aren't limited to tablets or books, and when I heard about the DCS field experiences, I was excited. I signed my kindergartner up to DCS, knowing the power that experiential learning has. My own childhood was filled with similar learning. Within the first days of school, my elation soured. No one had mentioned my child would not be allowed to participate without going alone. He's six. I can't send him to the woods by himself. Certainly, being physically alone in the woods during a field trip would raise eyebrows. I have a choice: sign the indemnification and hold harmless waiver, which means the district, its board members, employees, agents, and Mr. Hanson cannot be held liable, or my child is not permitted the very opportunity that's so foundational, it's explicitly noted in the charter school contract. An emphasis on outdoor themes. The outdoors will serve as a classroom in which children can observe changes in nature and create their own nature space. On the last field experience, my child's nature space was a tablet in the elementary school office. There was no indemnification and hold harmless waiver for the bus trip to the Aldo Leopold in Madison. Is the Hanson Woods so dangerous that no one can be legally responsible? Why are the children going to such a dangerous place that no participating adult can be held liable or responsible? Is the school paying for this experience? If not, isn't statute 895.52 protecting the liability of the landowner sufficient? All liability claims, causes of action based upon the actions or omissions of the district, its board members, employees, and agents, the only caveat is one that the Wisconsin Supreme Court has ruled cannot be waived: intentional or reckless acts. Everyone is released from all losses, all damages, any monetary awards, all expenses, including all costs. I want my child to be able to go on the field trips, but I cannot sign his rights away with this hold harmless indemnification waiver, so I'm asking that the waiver be revisited, rewritten, or removed. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we do have some donations. Oh, did anybody else sign in? Has anybody else signed in on the form?
No.
Okay. Before you sit down, can you hit the speaker? Thanks. We do have a donation to recognize tonight. Codwell Lumber has donated a variety of wooden product samples to the CHS art department. So thank you for their generosity. That will serve our students well in a number of projects that are done through the high school art department. And thank you to Codwell for their years of support to the district. They've really been there for various projects, a go-to for us, just special events, maintenance, whatever, we have had going on for many years. So...
Wasn't me. It wasn't me.
So thank you very much to Doug and Tom at Codwell for that. Any other recognitions or correspondence that I've missed? I feel like there's one, but it's okay. If I figure it out, we'll come back to it. Okay. Moving on to board business. Ooh, we have a full room tonight. It's exciting. We have lots of people here who've been working really, really hard.
Did you sign? That's what I thought.
Okay.
There were two cameras.
I'm sorry.
There were two cameras.
I'm sorry.
Okay, well, we're gonna back up. Becky has signed in. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to take a few minutes to kind of thank everybody who...
Becky hit the little... No, it was shut off. There you go.
Okay. I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank everybody who has been a part of this launching forward process. I know in the beginning, there was a lot of grumbling, I heard, and people were kind of, oh, more study groups, and more of this, and more of that. And I was probably one of those people at the beginning, but I just want to say that I realize how important it was going through the process and being able to gather all of this information and look at all this data. And, you know, now all these groups are coming to the board tonight with recommendations that are backed by sound data, and we have a great amount of research, and we have spent a lot of hours putting this stuff together. And now we can say to you guys, hey, we have done our jobs and our due diligence, and this is what we have to say. And I think it's important, especially coming from somebody who may have been a critic of it at the beginning, to say this really was an important process to go through to get to where we are right now. So I appreciate everybody who has taken a lot of time to do that. We've got parents, and we have, you know, administrators, and we have staff, and staff who double as parents, and all kinds of people, residents who have no children. So it's been a great group of people, and I just wanted to acknowledge everybody. And, you know, I hope that the board is able to take our recommendations that we have spent so much time and effort on, and make good with them, I guess, and, you know, do some wonderful things. So I kind of just wanted to thank everybody.
All right, so let's go again. Woo-hoo, we have a room full of people who spent a lot of time over the last few months looking at a number of...
I was up there too, sir. I was signed up also.
Seriously, where did that piece of paper go? Okay, well, come on up.
I'll make it really quick.
You've got five minutes.
Oh, just don't make it less than half.
I'm sorry, I didn't have Becky introduce herself. But we've heard from her, so introduce yourself, please.
I'm Becky.
You're Becky? Hi, Becky.
I'm Shane Geely. I'm a proud parent of three kids in the district. I have two children that went through the DCS program. I have another child in 4K that will be in the DCS program next year. And I guess my statement, it probably would have been better last meeting, but I couldn't make it. Our wonderful local paper, which does a great job. Columbus Elementary fails to meet expectations with a score of 45.6. Flip it over, DCS received a grade of 77.3, exceeds expectations. My kids have had a wonderful experience with DCS. I'm unfamiliar with your situation, but I want to know why, my statement, why are we not expanding this program? You can put it in, there's more kids in, you know, the regular school than DCS, the difference of ranges and stuff, but no matter how you look at it, the DCS score is, you know, 25% higher than the regular CMS scores. No, CMS, my one's a C. But I just want, I would really love this program to be extended and moved into the middle school. I know that's not possible right now. Every year, I was part of the board member also for DCS. There's 20 kids on the waiting list every year. That's a full classroom. There's no reason this program isn't being expanded, and I'm sure none of you guys know that. None of the parents know that, because it's, you know, privileged, you can't, privacy. But there's a full classroom waiting to get into DCS the last three years, and I've been involved with it. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so is there anybody else who's signed in on the missing form? Sometime before the evening is over, it will show up. All right, we're gonna go again, and I'm just gonna turn it over to you this time and introduce our study group presenters and the background and the context of our conversation tonight.
Okay. So on June 18th, the board gave the administration a charge to look into creating lead or study teams to determine the next best steps in addressing the identified response themes that we identified when we took the 2018 Community Engagement Survey. And of those teams, we had seven study teams, and those were athletics and co-curriculars, communications and outreach, community campus and partnerships, curriculum, facilities, energy efficiency and maintenance, performing arts, safety, security, and well-being. Those are the themes that were identified in that commu... Sorry, Community Engagement Survey that we took in 2018. And so we took that task very seriously, and we began in July of 2018. And as Becky referred to earlier, we, as you can see tonight, we have a full house here tonight, but this is just a really a representation of a lot of hard work from a lot of people. There were many more people that took part in these tasks and in these teams. And we were led by a consultant from Hawick Associates, Drew Hawick, who has been helping really the district in quite a few of our activities that we've been doing over the last couple of years. And so Drew is gonna really kind of lead us. If you go forward a little bit, I don't know who has, oh, I don't even... If you go forward a little bit on the slides, I don't know who has the clicker in the back. Justin, can you go forward a little bit for me? Couple more. All the way to the timeline. There you go. Drew's gonna talk a little bit about the process, back one, that he led us through as teams. As I said, we began in July, but Drew wants, will talk about the process that he led the study teams through. So Drew, if you would, please?
My pleasure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, what you see in front of you here is an overview of the sessions, six sessions that were held. At each session, there was seven study teams, and what I want to commend, as did Becky, is the discipline that these study teams used to make the recommendations which you're gonna hear tonight. It is tempting, when issues have been identified, for people to jump right in with solutions based on their perspective, and sometimes a very narrow perspective. And I didn't experience this at all with this group, partly because of the discipline that was put into place on how this process would work. So after the July meeting, where the results of the community survey was presented, and actually, the emphasis that came from the community at your one-year progress report, where it was very clear that your community wanted this initiative to be community-led and community-engaged. And so in July, at a meeting at the high school, a large number of citizens came out, and staff, and so on, and basically raised their hand and said, I'm interested in signing up on a study team. And rolling up my sleeves to figure out, what is it, what is the possibility of addressing the opportunity stroke issues that were identified way back in launching the legacy in 2016, reinforced in 2017, and then moving into action from now, starting this last year? And I want to particularly acknowledge the people here who helped to facilitate those meetings. This was, this was a challenging set of circumstance, in that you had a wide variety of citizens who chose to participate. Their knowledge and perspectives on the topic varied significantly. You had some people show up at some meetings, not at others, and yet these facilitators kept the group moving forward to get a lot of work done in six sessions. So I just want to particularly acknowledge those individuals who either volunteered or were voluntold to keep these groups moving forward. And I want to say just a brief word about the process. All of the documents that were, that captured each meetings were made available on the website, and I'm gonna assume that board members, you have looked at those. Because if you do, you will see the amount of information that these groups generated and researched in preparation for coming up with the recommendations tonight. And if you go back and look at the very first meeting where we met, the first meetings were basically on just what is the focus of this group, how does it relate to the vision and mission of the district, and what is it we need to really understand before we move to a solution? And so those first two meetings were all about getting data and research and asking the question, what does this mean to us? What are we learning? And that is part of that discipline process that helps to ultimately, when you get to the point of saying, so what are our recommendations? You're doing so with the knowledge that you've really looked under all the rocks, you've looked at other districts what they've done, and so on and so forth. And so Becky's sentiments that she shared here are mine as well, that this is a group of people that really put in a lot of time to use a disciplined approach to this. And I'm sure the board will listen carefully to the recommendations and act appropriately on those, and I'm interested to hear what happens tonight as well in terms of recommendations. So hats off to Annette for her leadership and guidance, the administrative leadership team, and all of the citizens, 35, 40, 45, depending on the evening, who showed up all those evenings and really put some concerted thought and ultimately some great ideas forward that you'll hear tonight. I believe the athletics and co-curriculars teams are gonna begin, and that, I'll turn that over to you.
Thanks. All right, apparently there's truth in saving the best to last, so they put me and Kelvin first. We were participants in the athletics and co-curricular group. The members are up there. There was parents in both the elementary and middle school, as well as parents/staff members of high school, students, as well as staff members and administrators on our Do I have a clicker? Oh, we have one. Okay, sorry, was unaware. As he said, the first few meetings, basically, we looked at a lot of data. We looked at participation numbers in Columbus, both at the elementary, middle school, high school. We talked about gym space. We looked at data from the survey that was given out and what townspeople were interested in. And then we spent a great deal of time comparing sort of what we have with other schools, similar and in our conference. Along with that, we looked at qualifications of staff and non-staff coaching. Maybe the information we assessed, Kelvin, no?
So again, we went through the survey. We looked at practice schedules in the school, not just looking at the schools' programs, but also the outside organizations, basketball and stuff, that also use our schools. And then we looked at the other schools, mostly in our conference, and see what they offer for athletics and co-curriculars, not just at the high school, but even intermediate middle school, and all the way down to the elementary school. And then we also looked into how the other schools were staffed, as far as were they on staff coaches and advisors, or are they people from the community?
Some of the key learnings, we did have less participation at the elementary and middle school levels here in Columbus. In looking at that, discussing it with our group and the parents involved, some of that has to do with potential transportation issues, and perhaps less interest from those kids being able to, and being able to stay. But there was plenty of available things at the high school level and at the middle school level compared to other schools in our district.
Less interest from qualified individuals to fill coaching and advising roles.
As we said, the Columbus School District did offer, for schools our size, very comparable, if not more, extracurricular-type activities, not only athletics, but also other co-curricular activities compared to other schools in our conference or our size.
Then we looked at the facility usage, and we are pretty much always at capacity. There's, especially in the winter, when you look at basketball, there are concerts going on, dance team needs to use it, and rarely gets to outside practices coming in as well, as well as when there's concerts and the play and stuff like that. I lose, and we lose PE space as well. And again, they don't have an actual place to call their own. Again, I kind of skipped ahead. Spring, musical, again, they take the gym for a whole week, and we have to fit track, baseball, girls soccer, softball, and golf all need a place to practice in March, when it's not nice enough for us to go outside. And again, you also have other team, outside teams that want to come in and use our space.
As Kelvin mentioned, with the capacity, that leads to a lack of flexibility with our space, and any weather concerns, things like that, along with supplying what is a safety concern for our athletes, spectators, and our FIAE participants, sorry, in our classrooms. Our gym space is very compact for what we're doing in practice and in FIAE, as well as our outdoor facilities being somewhat unsafe due to fencing issues, even at the football field slash baseball field slash whatever band performance area slash whatever we need to use some of these things for. So those were some of the things that we looked at. We had two statements and needs. I'll take the first one, to provide students of Columbus District and the residents of the community timely access to safe, appropriate athletic and co-curricular facilities. So we felt the facilities that we have need to be looked at, and we need, you know, there's some things we'll come up with later on, but we talked a lot about the facilities that we actually have, making sure people have access to them, but making sure they also have safe facilities and adequate facilities to use.
And then our second one is to provide the elementary, intermediate, middle, and high school students with access to the appropriate amount of co-curricular opportunities with an increased number of coaches and advisors.
Some possible solutions we have, build a new auditorium, build a new fieldhouse are the top two. We not only looked at athletics, as we said, but we also looked at all co-curriculars. An auditorium space would be necessary for many of our co-curriculars, forensic perhaps to play, things like that, as well as obviously our music department. And in terms of using a gym space perhaps for that, you're gonna need to replace gym space. We also talked about a fieldhouse, gym space, fitness areas, and not just in the realm of, we need a great basketball court to play on, but we also need more gym space at the elementary school. We have no full-size gym at the elementary school. We have one gym at a middle school, and now we've added another grade to. We talked about that. And obviously, high school gym space, depending on what we would do with JV and practices and spring and everything else, the high school gym space is, you know, borderline adequate for the uses that we have.
Next, we could look into redesigning or repurposing like the football and outdoor fields. So right now, the football field shares with the baseball, and again, it's all on the city's property. Look into moving that inside the track, which would also help us be able to host home track meets, or not home, but bigger track meets, something to look into, to be more self-sufficient, so we're not relying so much on the city. Then hire, train, recruit, and support coaches and advisors. And then we also talked about alternative transportation after school, later, like a late bus type thing, especially for the elementary, intermediate, and middle school kids. We did discuss that one actually quite a bit, though the logistics of that, it wouldn't be easy, but it is something that we could possibly look into.
And then finally, we come up with what is our recommendation and rationale. So, and basically, the easiest thing we could come up with is the allocation of more resources towards the facilitation of our athletics and co-curricular.
Do you know some of the rest? Rational? Yeah, so for that rationale, part of, part of that is increased safety, more coaches at practice. For some sports, there, sometimes when kids maybe get hurt or injured during, during it, there, there are very few coaches around to help that kid, but then when they're helping one of their players, who is watching it and in charge of the other ones. It'll help increase participation, especially when you have people working in the building, getting to know and build that relationship with those students. It'll also help our competitiveness, obviously, the better coaches and advisors you have, it's going to elevate the performance of the students, which will help. That leads into community pride. When, when that stuff is successful, it really brings the community together. Perception, I'm kind of gonna link that with the, with the next one, so link to the other districts. Sports is a great way to get people to hear about you. I'm sure we are all aware of schools that are very good at athletics, and you might not have any idea what their test scores are and stuff like that. So it gives people an idea of what is going on in that community. And then the culture and climate in the school. When you're, when you're doing well in your co-curriculars and extra, you know, sports and things like that, it's a much more positive environment, and when you have coaches in the building, advisors who are building that environment, it helps everything. It helps test scores and gets kids, again, involved, keeps them out of other issues and keeps them out of trouble.
So basically, sort of at the end, I mean, you know, I guess what we talked about is obviously having to go now to some sort of a facilities study, facilities committee. I know there's other groups that'll talk about facilities here tonight, and decide what we, what we are going to need perhaps in the future for facilities. Facilities, especially your auditoriums, your gyms, your fields, the number-one things that's people from other schools, other places, other things see of your school, in terms of the pride perception as well, and those were things that we talked about as, you know, advertising our school. So... I don't know where we go next, but I think that's it.
Marlon and Kelvin, could you quickly maybe introduce yourselves? Not everybody on the board knows who you are, so...
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
I'm Marlon Hensler. I teach high school science, coach track, cross-country, head the student council with Mr. Zahn as well. I don't want to leave him off.
I'm Kelvin Zenz. I teach PE and health at the high school, and I'm also the head football coach and assistant track coach.
Thank you. Sorry. And are there any other members from the Athletics and Co-Curricular Committee who's here tonight? Could you please just real quick stand up and maybe introduce yourself?
I'm Delia Ergis.
I'm a resident.
Thank you.
Resident.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And...
Jake Kacker, high school principal. I was on the team.
Thank you. Okay. And Joe.
Are we ready for me?
Joe?
I was on the committee.
Joe Snyder, yes.
High school business, and I'm assistant track coach and our future business leaders of American Advisor.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Our next committee is Communications and Outreach.
Hi.
Hi, Linda.
I would like just to introduce myself.
Yeah.
I'm Linda Parpart. I graduated from high school here in Columbus in 1967. I am the senior member of our group, which makes me all wise and all knowledgeable. And that's one reason they have me saying this, and also my, I can't read the... We're communications and outreach. Yeah, thank you. Summary, these are our key data points that we, we looked at all the information that we could derive from the survey that was taken in the spring. And I, I want to say that all the information we had is public knowledge. There's nothing that we were given that I feel is any way that somebody else couldn't find out the information that we had. I don't want anybody to feel that we're, you know, we had an agenda going in, we came open-minded, because that's what we were asked to do, and I believe our, I, when you spend that much time with a group, you kind of get to read, read people, and I feel we did an exceptional job. And so our, our key data points were the demographics, percentages of the surveys. That was interesting to see what groups of adults looked at what information, the different mediums. I, as an adult, I like everything written out. Chat didn't do that for me tonight. That's okay, Chat, I love you anyway. But there are, you know, the, there are a lot of people who go to the Facebook and to Internet for their information. I loved the idea of having a newsletter. I still receive that. The information we assessed was a community survey, basically, because that was what our community wants, and we are just trying to pinpoint and combine all the information from that survey. Because this is a group, these committees are coming up with what the community wants, not necessarily just what we need, but what we want as a future for our children. Okay. What we learned from this data, women get their information from online sources. Men tend to lean more toward traditional mediums, you know, like the newspapers and...
Their wives.
Yes, their wives. We called them, in a nice way, we said, more passive consumers. That's a nice way of saying that. Newspapers and newsletters are still relevant to a certain segment, as I indicated with myself. To me, okay, Chat was so nice and gave me his laptop here, and I'm reading off of the board. And what an elementary parent uses for information is different than what people, you know, parents from high school students or the different schools we have now. Every parent is not going to access the same information, and they don't need it in the same way. Information needed by parents varies by building, and in big letters, multiple audiences require multiple strategies. That means that we have to come up with different alternative ways of getting our information out to the public, because the public is so diverse. Okay. Statement of need, more effective communication to encourage stakeholders in the greater Columbus community. And I'm hoping everybody by now realizes that stakeholders are all the residents that are included in the Columbus School District, not just parents, not just the administration or people who, you know, tend to go to the meetings or have children in school. I, myself, never had a child, but I have been very dedicated to seeing that the children in this era are educated as well as I felt that I was, or better. Possible solutions, we came up very briefly. Hire a communications director, someone who can put all these strategies that we would like together in one form, so everybody can understand it, and create the communication strategies to inform the public. And if there are questions that they know where to go, who to ask, none of this is hidden information, like I said. And hiring a communications director puts it all, the responsibility basically, on one person, so you know who to, I guess it would be nice to say blame, but that's not, that's not nice. But you would have one, one person who speaks a common language through everybody, to everybody. Is that my end? Oh, no. Oh, gosh. I'm off. I can't read that one. Sorry, Chat will have to help me.
Hi, I'm Chat. So Linda, Linda did a great job. I'm not quite as old, so I can still read that. So what, what we're looking for is, is consistent and organized information and a point person who can work with technology, with paper, with the newspaper, with Channel 3000, with, you know, whomever it, it might be that, that needs information about our schools. Through these, I don't like to read slides, but...
You want me to do this? I, he came up with it now.
Well, sure.
Yeah. Hey, honey.
Okay.
You can tell we had a very relaxed group, and we got to know each other very well. If, if you have not been on a committee, you've got to, you just have to. It's, it's very interesting, and you learn a lot about the people of Columbus. Okay. Through these launching forward study group meetings, we have identified that there is no one correct way to disseminate all the information the district needs to distribute. By hiring a communications director, the Columbus School District would be able to identify a person who is accountable for creating and implementing a consistent communication strategy. Communications director would utilize the data our group has broken down to help develop this plan. We believe that effective communication is built by creating relationships, and this person would be responsible for initiating and maintaining relationships with the city staff, community organizations such as the Chamber of Commerce, Odd Fellows, Knights of Columbus, Friends of the Library, and businesses. When a school district is able to deliver consistent, positive communication and messaging via different mediums and by building relationships, it is more likely to achieve greater awareness and satisfaction among all stakeholders. I hope that wasn't too long, and it was everything that we felt we needed to, to say for our time spent on this. And I have to say, it was enjoyable. You do get to know the community by doing this, so please volunteer if you're able, attend meetings. It was great. Thank you. I'm done, right?
You're done. Thank you, Linda. And my name is Liz O'Donnell. I, I graduated from here in 1975. Both kids went through, and I was on the school board for a dozen years. And I have to say that this has been a consistent concern of the school districts. This didn't just happen with the onset of technology and more people using technology, but yet the Linda Parparts that want the, the paper, I mean, we have to adapt to our, to everybody. So I, we do believe that this is really important.
Yes, we do. Everybody communicates in one way or another, physically, verbally. You communicate every day, every moment, so it is very, very important.
And Chat was our leader.
Our facilitator.
He was fearless leader.
He was.
He did a great job. Becky, you've already met. And then we also had Nikki Smith. She took our notes. Glenn Westlake, he's a, he's a data guy, and he did a great job of breaking down the survey and really helping us to sort through the survey. And Robert DeGroot was also on our team. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Katie Ryan. I was a part of the Community Campus and Partnerships Group, along with Cory Dink, the facilitator for our group. So, I have a clicker here. All right. Okay. So basically, a summary of everything that we looked over. We didn't have a lot of data to start off with. So what we really focused on was the, the survey that went out. We spent a lot of time kind of looking at all of that data, and then enrollment trends and things like that. We really quickly realized that being community partnerships and community campus are sort of like two separate issues. So we tried to separate them as much as possible to try to really define what a community partnership is and what, you know, a community campus is. So we tried to kind of separate us like we were studying two separate things. I printed it out because I can't really see up there. And I'm not even old. Just can't see it already. So we do not have much data at all, like I said before. All we had really to go off of was, was the survey that we, we had. So very small demographic of people from our community actually took that survey. And so that was something that we were a little bit alarmed by. To be able to take any of that data and actually put forth a ton of suggestions from that seemed like it would be inappropriate, because a lot of the community had not been spoken for or had not, you know, taken that survey. So that's kind of where we left that. And then with the community partnerships, we also don't have a ton of data as far as what our existing partnerships are that our district holds with any of the businesses here in town. So there's just not a lot of actual documentation on any of that. So how do we, you know, improve the existing partnerships that we do have, and then also how do we create new partnerships in the future? So with that, let's skip ahead here. Statement of need, to research and gather data from all of the Columbus stakeholders on what they want in a community campus. So to specifically define the needs of the Columbus community, I think was really important, because, you know, we looked into other areas that have what we call a community campus. But a community campus has really got to be specific to each individual community. We threw around ideas like, well, what are the needs here in Columbus? Is it, you know, is it a food pantry program? Is it, you know, do we need more space for the arts, like an auditorium, things like that, athletics, obviously? So all of that kind of is built into that, but we really don't know what everybody in the community wants and what they would use that facility for. And then as far as the partnership side of things, we just really need to build the partnerships that we have, and we have to remember that it has to be a mutual benefit. So, you know, the school district having a partnership has to benefit the school district, but it also has to benefit whoever that business owner is. So our solutions are focus groups. So just being that we don't have the data, we really have to, we're really putting forth that we want you guys to spend time and get this right, and see what are the real needs of the community, the Columbus community, and what are the things that are going to be the most important to everybody moving forward. And it's going to be difficult, I think, to figure that out, because clearly, there's people that we are not reaching with the surveys, and you guys do, from what I can see, like a great job. I mean, you go through a lot of different avenues, but we're missing people, and we have to figure that out. So we put forth, hey, let's go door-to-door, or personal calls, and that doesn't sound like fun, but, you know, it's, it's, it comes down to that, I think, almost, just we have to find a way to reach people and get their voices heard. And as far as the partnership side of things, I really liked the idea that we came up with for a partnership proposal. This is something like a loose contract that we could put together, so that if we're proposing to begin a partnership or enhance any other partnership that the district has, that we could, you know, put together a proposal, present it to them, and then each side of the partnership really can have an identified layout of what the partnership should be and how it's going to be mutual, mutually beneficial. Lastly, I think as far as the community campuses, we really have to reach out. We don't necessarily visit other districts. We can really reach out, ask, you know, how they kind of created a community campus in other areas, and, you know, how did they identify the needs of the community? So lastly, recommendation, I'm just repeating myself at this point, but to research other districts and get the information and their version of a community campus. And then again, hold focus groups. And in our time together, we did lay out a bunch of focus group ideas for you as far as like what that would look like. So for example, like manufacturers in the area, parents, trades, retirees, et cetera. And we laid out just different challenges that you might face with dealing with, with each of those groups and what they would bring to the table. So, yeah, and then, I mean, it's, it's all on you now, sorry. There's not, there's not a lot of data for us to comb over left, but...
Just much data.
Just much. But thank you for, for hearing us.
Cory, who is part of your committee? Did you introduce your committee people?
So it's just Katie and I that are here today. We had Justice Groot, Lori Galston.
Galston.
Galston, sorry, Amy Zittle, and Keith Batten...
Battenhorst.
There you go, Battenhorst. They were all on our committee here or there, and I'm going to admit, we had three members that were really constant, so we did a lot of the work, and I just want to thank them for, for being there all the time.
I'm Henry St. Maurice. I was on this committee. For those of you who don't know, I'm a parent of a child who went through Columbus Schools. I'm a spouse of a board member. I've been involved with the schools as a participant with the Columbus Area Endowment and the Rotary Club, both of which are engaged in schools. I was pleased to be invited to be on the curriculum committee, because as a professional educator, I've been involved with curriculum for 50 years, and I actually have a degree that says curriculum in it, so if I run over 50 minutes, please stop me. But we started with the idea of what is a curriculum, and of course, it's a very old idea. It's, it means the courses of study that you follow, and the slogan that we started with was, what knowledge is it most worth? You can't do it all, you have to pick, and the process that I like involves not decision, but deliberation, so we deliberated. And the first point we made, and I want to thank right off the bat, thank Becky for facilitating, and thank Tim Mineholtz for taking notes, and you did too, right? So we got great notes on this, is Columbus, we felt from the data, and we did have a lot of data to mine, and as in any mine, there's a lot of overburden, but we noticed that in the conference, we were near the bottom of the proficiency scores that we were looking for, that we were seeing increases in open enrollment, that we were looking for, that we were seeing increases in open enrollment, that we were looking for more options for expanding the, what we believe are the key subject areas, that go by the acronym STEAM. And they were not looking at career pathways that to advise our students on in the course catalog. Once again, there were things that were in there, but they weren't strung together, and there were things that weren't in there. So we dug through the course catalog, we looked at the enrollment data trends, and report card data are ample statewide. There's a few key that are incomparable of the 424 school districts in the state. Columbus is not comparable to all of them. So we focused on that, and because K-12 Science and Makerspace were part of the STEAM and also part of the mission that we were looking at in terms of the career and college readiness for the 21st century skills. You got the clicker?
I know, it'd be useful.
Thanks, sure. So the key learnings we had was that the report cards are based on criterion, but to not give the information, we need to do better. And the distinction there is, a criterion is part of a standard, is part of something by which an individual is judged without reference to other individuals. We don't use bell curves. We're saying, does a student have mastery or not of a skill? And that would be true of hands-on options in the school buildings and in the community, as has been mentioned. And we're not looking enough at standardized test performance in relation to standards-based. Words sound the same, but they're different. We're looking at whether, if you ask someone to master a standard, and everyone knows what a driver's license is, you get a license or you don't. You don't get a better license if you get all 25 written answers correct. You get the same license. You meet the standard, the criteria are right there in front of you. We think that many of the 21st century skills we're talking about should be judged by standards in terms of progress towards the standard, but also progress through the traditional grades, the traditional curriculum. That's a big change we pointed to in most of the data that we saw not being there.
Our clicker died.
Next slide, thank you. So the statement of need we started with was that we need to support individual needs and growth, challenge students academically, develop those 21st century skills, prepare for community, college, and career-ready, and be measurable by a variety of means and across time. We have to change the way we think about the curriculum. It's not measurable by percentages and letter grades anymore. We'll probably keep those. But we're looking at a different way of measuring that progress of the students individually and certainly as groups. Does it work now?
No. Thank you.
There it is. So, we, we looked at some solutions, and here are four of them. We want to look at multiple measures. We want to, referring back to community partnerships linked to the curriculum, what are the 21st century skills that are needed? We need the technologies to support those skill development. And we have to have a wider variety of course options. We have to give more choices along career pathways. And just to give you one example, right now, we grade students mostly individually. Most of our community and career and college depends on team partnerships. If you're a Green Bay pack, you have to catch the ball, but you also have to block for someone else. It's a team game. We see what's going on with the curriculum involving those partnerships where students are recognized for their participation in learning in the community, learning communities in school and the community around us.
Justin?
Justin?
So, we recommend that there be more individual learning plans used for all students at all grade levels in reference to standards, and that the process to monitor that be changed from the assessment that we have now. It's not going away, but we're going to have to develop something around 21st century skills and the college, community, and career readiness that we set as goals.
Do you have any other members here tonight also that we could introduce?
No.
Okay.
So our group was smaller. A couple other just key people to acknowledge from our group would be Julia Hoffman.
Absolutely.
Again, a former school board member who came back and did a lot of work with us. And then, we had two key teachers on our group, Tim Mineholtz, who is a music teacher at the middle school and high school, and Heidi Kirkberg, who is a science teacher at the high school. And then Derek Trenton was also a parent who participated a bit on our group as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kelly?
There was more than one Kelly in the room.
There's room for two Kellys.
This is the rock star.
So, I'm Kelly Jesh. I was on the Facilities Energy Efficiency and Maintenance Group. I am a parent of a four case, or excuse me, a kindergarten student, and I have two kids that will be coming up through the school in the next few years. So, I'm kind of new to the school system, new to the city of Columbus, but wanted to be involved and an active participant in the school. So, this is my opportunity. Some of my team members are here. If you guys want to introduce yourselves.
I'm Jeff Gerson. I'm retired and dabble in the school district and the great middle school we have, so it's fun.
Karen Westlake. I am the dean of students at the Columbus Elementary School and early learning coordinator.
Marcy Bindel, a parent. I have three daughters who have been through the DCS program.
Prescott Diamond, resident and parent of several students in the school district.
Troy Marshall. I'm the facilities manager here at Columbus.
And then we've got a few, a couple other members that weren't able to make it, Bill and Jeff Engel, and then Annette was also on our team. So we looked at a lot of data. There's a lot of data around factors that affect our facilities. And the biggest things that we focused on, though, knowing that there was other groups looking at other things such as curriculars and co-curriculars, all that kind of stuff. And we focused mostly on the facilities themselves and what, what takes up the needs of those facilities, so the specific needs. One thing we looked at was growth and the projected growth of the city. We also looked at enrollment information. So we looked at enrollment within our residency, and then also open enrollment and people that are transferring in and transferring out of the school district. We looked at our building capacities. We tried to understand better how they fit the current enrollment and also future enrollment needs. We also looked at a study that was done back in 2011 that was completed to review the facilities and kind of review all of the buildings. It looked at maintenance and capacity, a lot of different factors. We also looked at different trend data with cohorts and the need to prepare students for the 21st century. So there's a couple key points on here, easy to read. The biggest things to note are the building capacities. So we can see here that our elementary school is at 84% capacity, our middle school is at 97% capacity, and our high school is at 62%. Keep in mind that this year, a change was made to move children from the elementary school to the middle school, so that brought down that elementary number, but pushed up the middle school number. And some additional research I did right before I got here, actually just crunching some numbers that we had already looked at, but I had noticed that the current kindergarten class is actually 58% larger than the kindergarten class of the senior class that's graduating this year. So if that gives you an idea of that growth that I was talking about, 58% more students in the kindergarten classes here. Another thing that was interesting from the facility study that was done in 2011, there was some information from the state that talked about the outdoor space recommendations for facilities. I noticed that elementary schools were to have 10 acres of space with an additional acre per 100 students. Middle schools were to have 20 acres of space with an additional acre per 100 students. And high schools were recommended to have 30 acres of space with an additional acre per 100 students. Currently, if we look at acres that we have, our elementary school is at 45% of that, our middle school is at 13% of that, and our high school is at 73% of that. So I think it speaks volumes that we don't have that outdoor space that we need. Another thing that was really interesting to me was that two times more students actually open enroll than those students that are leaving. So, people are coming in at a faster rate than they're going out, and as we see communities around us expand, we're expecting that that could increase exponentially in the future. And in fact, open enrollment has increased by 306% in the last seven years. So, there's a lot of facility functionality issues. You may have heard some come up in some of these other conversations, but here's some that we outlined. In the elementary school, there's actually a gym that's shared as a cafeteria. And actually, that cafeteria has no kitchen. So the food has to come from the middle school, be transported to the elementary school, served, and then brought back to the middle school to be cleaned. In addition, my kindergartner actually has made comments, "Mom, don't pack so much food because I don't have time to eat it." So, that is because there's people coming in, moving all those tables in for kids to eat, and then kids eating really fast, and moving all those tables out so gym class can resume. So if you can imagine that space, it's pretty tight. In the, in the middle school, there's actually multiple classrooms having gym class at the same time, up to 60 kids in one gym. It's a lot. I can imagine the noise. As I talked about the green space, so we don't really have enough green space outside at any of the middle school or the elementary school for fields. We talked about, I heard about the charter discovery school, and you think, well, they had to go to all the Leopold because there's no outdoor space for them to visit at the elementary school here. Also, in the middle school, there's no science labs. And in fact, I was picking out my son the other day, and a middle school student mentioned that to me because, just randomly, he said, "There are no science labs here." In the high school, the middle school, the gym is used as an auditorium, and the elementary school, the gym is used as an auditorium as well as a gym. It's got a lot of different features. And another thing is the drop-off and pickup areas at the elementary school and the middle school, they're very concerning for safety. And we feel that there's a need for something different to happen there. And just as, was just being talked about, about the curriculum pieces, there's a lot of needs within our facilities to expand them for the use to prepare us kids for the, prepare kids for the 21st century. In fact, we had a local business actually recommend, or actually put money on the table to invest into a fab lab in the high school, but because there's no space to build that fab lab out, we had to turn that money away. Also, I work in a business in the city of Madison, and I just know that those needs are constantly changing. We're also, we're always looking at having collaborative space, and the time I worked there in the last 10 years, that space has changed three times. So I can only imagine that those needs are also happening in the schools, right? If, if the business of today is looking towards the future and changing the space, I would think that our schools would need to do that as well. Technology is at the heart of everything, and we need to have collaborative environments for our students to move into the 21st century. So our statement of need is pretty long, and you guys can all read it. But ultimately, we're trying to find a space that's going to fit the needs of this growing population, to make sure that we have adequate space for all our children, to create more efficient capabilities, to have the larger gyms, the cafeterias, the auditoriums, all that kind of stuff that we need, kitchens, and then to equip those classrooms with the things that they need to make sure that the people can move forward into the 21st century. We're teaching those children those STEAM pieces and making sure that we have the facilities to support that. And then also to make sure that we have safe and accessible and energy-efficient spaces into the future. So, oh, the clicker died again. So we had a lot of possible solutions. We had, I would say, mm, 30 post-it notes, maybe? And most of them were circling around different concepts of, we could build a whole new facility. We could, you know, one 4K through 12 structure. We could remodel one building, move kids to another building. We could maybe remodel two buildings, and just a myriad of different opportunities, possibilities. But they're all costly, and they all require an in-depth analysis to really understand what those needs are, what our current situation is, what that gap is, and what we can do to solve that problem. We also found that we really need to gain acceptance and build understanding across the community in order to make this happen. And so we realized that throwing one of these possible solutions at you wasn't the best step. So instead of giving you one of those options, we are giving you something else. We are asking for you to hire a firm to do a complete facilities assessment study. This study would give us a comprehensive assessment of all the facilities, give us a detailed information of the financial impact, costs, acquisition costs of land, building costs, remodeling costs, all of that. Would also give us comparables to other districts to understand what other people are doing out there. And then also, we need to create a community facilities committee. So to expand on the work that we've done, we need to broaden that. We need to bring in more people. We need to bring in business partners, parents, non-parents. We need to involve all the stakeholders within the community and build buy-in for whatever solution it is that we come to. We need to use social media to expand that message, and we need to make sure that there's education for all stakeholders. Ultimately, we need to really build support and make this a community-wide desire and And that's it?
I never like it when the kindergarten principal stands behind me. It's a very scary thing. It reminds me of a long time ago.
I'm open middle school.
That was worse. Good evening, everybody. I'm Henry Elling. I'm on the committee that worked at the performing arts topic, and we have a couple of folks here tonight that were helpful on that. Certainly, Mrs. Helpap and Mr. Glassbrenner kept us on task, and Sarah will be talking to you in just a couple minutes as well. I have two children that have gone through, I don't need the clicker.
I know, I'm doing it for you.
Yeah, I have two children that went through the program here at the Columbus School District, and Emma's a sophomore at the high school right now. The performing arts topic was actually an addition to the topics that you originally started with on the legacy program. Because of that, our key data points and our, our learning from the data are kind of segregated out because it wasn't something that I think the board expected to talk about as the overall project on this. So when we started, we, I promise, we didn't talk to the facilities committee, we didn't talk to the co-curricular committee, but we also agree with everything that they said, just so you know. But our, our focus was mostly on the performing arts, as you can imagine, and so we have some very interesting data points that most of our high school boys will be interested to know about as well. I'm not going to go through them now just to give it away for them, but I think that as you get into some of the other conversations with the community and the idea of keeping kids occupied, one of the things with the performing arts is it's a different way of learning, it's a different way of expressing yourself, and the facility right now is not built to use on a regular basis. As you heard with the athletic group and the co-curriculars, there's a shared space, and if one group is in there, it really is impossible for the other group to be active in any form or fashion. So our key data points that we did go through, I'll only get into a couple of them. The last two, performing arts help self-esteem and speak to mood stability. And if you can imagine someone that's having a little bit of a challenge to put them into a performing arts situation where they have to stand up and act in front of people, maybe that's a healthy way of acting out rather than some other ways that you might imagine. And enjoyment of performing arts is about engagement of students. It requires you to participate. You can't sit on the bench in a performing arts setting. You're on the stage, you're part of the group, and everybody expects you to be part of the One of the challenges that we had was, the group that was tasked with this, I will admit that I went into it with a preconceived notion of what we were supposed to find. And then we had to actually prove it out with data. And that was a little bit harder to do because I knew what the answer should be, and these guys couldn't find it for me. So, but we did find several different research articles that go into the data points and are a proof of the expectation that participation does make a difference. And being a loner in middle school and high school is a challenge, not just for parents, not just for the administrators, but for the other students as well. And you can't be a loner. And you can't be a loner in the performing arts. There's just simply no way to do that. So, thank you very much if you want to go to the next slide. The key point that we came out with was that an opportunity to be in a performing arts setting leads to fewer risky behaviors, it increases your mental health, and it increases engagement in school. Can't get any simpler than that, can't get any more focused than that. But the problem is, we don't have a facility that we can really do that. And so, our statement of need is to improve and expand the access to the performing arts programming, not just the facility, but the programming overall for the students and the citizens of the Columbus School District. And it's important for you to note that it's not just for the students. The facilities and the programming that we're talking about branches out, and it grows from the district to be all parts of the community. And not just the city of Columbus, but all the elements of the school district can participate in different levels of the performing arts. So, that's what we went with for our statement of need, and before we get into the solutions, I'm just going to tell you, Sarah's going to talk about that because my solutions you guys don't want to know about.
Well, as Henry has alluded to, we came up with some solutions pretty quick, and maybe they were a little preconceived, and we had to do a little rethought, rethinking based on those. So, based on our statement of need, that we need to expand access to the performing arts for students and citizens, we decide, we need a new dedicated performing arts center. We need to provide additional performing arts opportunities and or, and/or renovate existing facilities to become a community learning center and performing arts center. And we went, wait a minute. What do we really need to do? What are we asking you? So, our recommendations are following the need and the potential solutions. We recommend the board to take the following steps. Direct administration to provide additional performing arts opportunities, which can include such things as an elementary choir, a high school one-act plays, or community band. But we also acknowledge that these additions would likely include changes to staffing and challenges with scheduling and budgeting and space within our district. That leads us to our second recommendation, and we are seconding the motion of the facilities group. We would hope that the board could hire a firm to do a district-wide space needs study, allowing staff, students, and parent input representing the performing arts as well as other groups. The rationale behind our recommendations is that data indicates the more performing arts activities lead to students who are engaged, healthier, happier, which are priorities indicated by our district's statement beliefs. And correspondingly, students who are engaged, healthy, and happy are more likely to be community career and college-ready, as stated in the mission of this statement, mission statement of the district. So, thank you for your time. Thank you for considering the performing arts because, at least those of us who are on this committee, it's, it's a very important part of our lives, and we appreciate the opportunities that our students can have and hope for more.
I did not break it, it's working.
Okay. I'm Janelle Desarn Verts, and the only other representative that I have here tonight is Joe. And Joe said that if he, I said, "If you feel so moved by what we're talking about, to come up and join me." So. We had a really unique mixture of people within the, the subcommittee, obviously myself, and then we had some police and fire representatives talking about the safety aspect of what we're talking about, and parents as well. And then we were also joined a few times by some of our pupil services staff. So, Lisa Blackwoods, our director of pupil services, joined us a few times, as well as John Crombie, who's the middle school counselor. So, we were able to get some perspectives from them as well. So, the summary of the data that we looked at, the data that we looked at quite a bit was the youth risk assessment information. We also looked at some other data that all ended up to be more social, emotional, behavioral type of data to go along with the well-being aspect of our study group. The reason that we ended up looking at a lot of the mental health or well-being data and a lot of what we talked about in those aspects were related to that were a couple of reasons. Early on, the conversations that we had talking about physical safety, a lot of those issues, the big priority issues, we were able to look at early on, and we were able to do a little bit of problem solving early in the school year when we had to apply for the Department of Justice Safety Grant, and the district did receive those grants, and we were able to solve some of those bigger safety issues that, that came up. And that included a Safe and Secure Entrance at the elementary that was in the survey as a primary need, and then some other smaller needs that we were able to address through the safety grant. The other reason is we didn't have a huge amount of data on the physical safety aspect. So, if you look at the facilities and the safety, Troy Marshall is going through the process right now of finalizing a safety audit that some of that data will be able to be used from. We just didn't have, or going through this process. So, that's why we turned our eye to the youth risk assessment, and again, that information is on the website under the Safety, Security, and Well-being Subcommittee. We also looked at the Positive Behavior System, which is the behavior system that the school district adopted this year. We looked at behavioral data, so we looked at referrals and other behavioral information for all students within the school district and looked at trends. And then we also spent a good amount of time talking about, Joe brought in and talked about the Department of Public Instruction's mental health framework. From all of this data, I think that the most, the most eye-opening and really caused us to, to realize that what we were doing and we're on the right path was the number of students reporting feeling sad, depressed, isolated, and suicidal was most impactful in our conversation. And again, all of that data is available online under the Safety, Security, and Well-being. Did you have anything you wanted to add to the, the data that we looked at?
Only that it really gets kind of scary when you look at that, and it seems like we're waiting for catastrophe to happen at some point down the road. And it seems like we need to take a very proactive approach to helping these kids before they reach the point of, of considering those things.
The key learnings from the data, again, a little bit deeper look at some of that specifically to the youth risk assessment. The alarming information that we noted were students who reported thoughts of suicide, those reporting the feeling of sad and anxiousness or of concern, and potentially other issues that are undiagnosed or unnoticed. The low percentage of students who feel safe at school is very alarming, and rates of students who have brought a weapon to school is of concern. Another thing that we noted in the behavioral data is that behavior referrals have increased over the past few years. So, that was just another trend that we noted. Anything you wanted to add?
Not really. You're doing good.
The statement of need that our subcommittee developed was to foster a culture and environment that supports the well-being of students and staff, resulting in increased safety and security. So, our committee looked at all of the, the behavior information, and also we talked about what, what's going on in our, our country in general when it comes to school safety, and having a strong understanding that mental health definitely plays a role in school safety and violent, and violent episodes or violent incidents at schools. So, that's why our statement of need is very carefully worded, that we want to foster a culture and environment that supports well-being of students and staff, therefore, therefore resulting in increased safety and security. And that's not just personal safety and security, that's facility-wide, community-wide safety and security. Some possible solutions that we identified, we identified quite a few, and we had to narrow it down because we only get a few minutes to talk. The biggest one that we talked about is investing in delivering a character-developing curriculum that can systematically be delivered in the classroom at home. So, this would be a guidance curriculum that would, that would focus on developing character traits or character skills in the classroom, and that, that those lessons can then be brought out into the home and into the community. Some caveats that we add to that is we need to be, to enable consistent delivery at home and in the community, we need to create and implement consistent communication or opportunities to, for students to bridge their learning from school to home and in the community. We also need to enable consistent delivery at school by building a systematic intervention system on the character expectations identified in the curriculum, and then enable consistent delivery at school across grade spans, consistently incorporate the character expectations into the classroom grading. So, again, that's kind of the, the, the caveats that go along with investing in a, a character developing curriculum that would be district-wide. Other solutions would be to hire a full-time social worker to provide the students, family, and staff of the Columbus School District, consistent access to care and alignment with the goals and strategic plan of the Columbus School District. That conversation really came out of the, the, what we had read about in the launching of new legacy, the, the launch priorities, the first go-around, and the conversations and the needs that were identified, not just in mental health, but also in AODA, and the continuity of care that comes along with having one dedicated provider for our students and our families. It was noted by the different officers that joined us in that there's oftentimes kind of a, a gap in care because it's, if you have a social worker from the county that's assigned, it's usually a, a social worker that's specific to that issue or that need that that family is experiencing, and so you don't always have the same social worker assigned to an issue or a school. So, there's not that continuity of care, and that was something that we really focused on being a priority. Another solution is to provide staff with mandatory ongoing professional development in mental health, crisis response plans, social, emotional learning competencies built into the classroom structure, or that guidance curriculum that we talked about. Another one which is not related to, this is the one that's not related to the mental health or the well-being, is one, one safety, physical safety issue that we talked about that, that hadn't been, hadn't been discussed yet is the need to create and implement school safety and response plan for after-hours events, such as bad weather, violence at indoor and outdoor sporting or co-curricular or community events. That's something that we need to look at as a district and something we couldn't find the data on as far as how we would be approaching that situation. And then the last, as indicated, Troy Marshall is, is wrapping up the safety audit as far as the facilities go, so we would just be hopeful that the board would take into consideration any of the, any of the findings that that audit would, would provide. Anything you want to add there?
Good job.
Thanks. So, after considering all of those solutions, the primary recommendations that we have are implementing that character-developing guidance curriculum and hiring a full-time social worker. With the data that we explored, those were the two things that we really felt were the highest priority needs, and then also it goes along with the overall strategic plan that, or strategic priorities that were identified by the community as well.
Okay. That was the work and the recommendations of the seven study teams. So, as you can see, that was a lot of work, a lot of time, and a lot of effort and dedication from the teams, and we hope the board will appreciate the, the time and the effort that was put in, not only by the community, the facilitators that really helped move all of the, the meetings forward, but also from Drew for guiding us in our work. I think sometimes it might have been a little like herding cats, but we, when we were really in our discussions, we really, there were times the time went by so quickly. I mean, we were just getting into the work. I know with my committee, Drew would come around and tell us we had to, we had a minute to like report out, and we're, "What? We don't want to report out yet." But it was really great work. I really appreciated the time that everybody put in. So, with that, if the board has any clarifying questions about process or the recommendations at this time, we would, we would be happy to take any of those clarifying questions.
To my left, Kelly, Bill, or Mary, anything? Or, should we mic anything?
Are we going to explain, we'll have a retreat?
Yes, I'm going to go there next. So, okay, well, thank you. First of all, thank you for a very thorough presentation because it outlines what you guys focused on, how you came to your conclusions, and your recommendations that we can work from. As we explained when we started this process a few months ago, when we reached this point, and it comes back to the board's possession, which we're at right now, we're not going to delay. So, the board has scheduled retreat for Wednesday night. It is our goal to review your recommendations and draw our conclusions and be ready to pass it back to administration before we end on Wednesday night. Two purposes. One, all the information is here, it's been available for us to follow along, and hopefully we can wrap it up. But two, just to keep things moving and looking at that Christmas break deadline of a week and a half from now, we really want to hand this back before Christmas break. So, that is our goal. The board will be in retreat on Wednesday night, and we'll keep you posted, and that will keep you posted on, on where we move forward with your recommendations. But thank you to all of you who are here. If you see those who participated and couldn't be here tonight, please extend our thanks. It's greatly appreciated. We've talked multiple times about how difficult it is, and some of you alluded to it, staying in the scope of your theme area, even though you know your, it relates to other discussion groups, and that's tough work. So, thank you for giving it your best effort to do that, we appreciate it. And thank you to Drew. You've been with us now for two years on this path to what we call our community-driven priorities and process. So, thank you for helping to facilitate that as well. So, anything else you want to add? All right, I'll give you guys thirty seconds. This is your perfect spot to leave, though you're welcome to stay because we're going to be talking about a couple monitoring reports, as well as the school safety assessment, which relates to the work you've done. But this would be your time to sneak out if you so desire. Have a good night, thank you.
No.
Sorry, administrators, you have to stay.
Thank you, everybody.
The little two-people-talky button. All right, moving on to the EL eight Financial Administration Monitoring Report.
Yep, so EL eight, we have Janelle Desarn Verts here. She is going to present to us EL eight tonight, so financial administration. So, Janelle, if you would, please.
This report is actually very straightforward because the majority of the report, the indicators are proved by the evidence, which is the audit booklet. That's what we had marked as the evidence, and I was able to get a final copy of our audit booklet from the auditors and submitted it in your board packet. We are scheduling a time, hopefully at a January meeting, where the auditors can come and present that data. So, so that would be in January that they would come. So, this one will be actually pretty short and straightforward under the EL eight Financial Administration, with the majority of the indicators, ELs and indicators, just stating basically everything that is outlined in the audit report, all of our fund balances, balances, receipts, and expenditures, earning compliance with state and federal law. So, I just had a couple that I was going to highlight. My computer's a little bit slow. Under indicator eight point four point one, which says that the EL eight point four is to allow reports, filings, and payments required by any state or federal agency to be overdue or inaccurately filed. Under eight point four point one, it said we are compliant when the district has presented financial information on a monthly basis to the Board of Education. We did submit that information on a timely basis, and in fact, we revised and improved our monthly reporting process, like we have talked about in the past, to be more transparent to the board on all of our financial practices. So, that, we are definitely in compliance. So that, we are definitely in compliance with. The following indicator, eight point four point two, where the district has presented the audited financial statements to the board and to other users of the information within the statutory timeframes. We are in compliance with that. I did add a copy of our due dates as assigned to us by the Department of Instruction. I provided in the board packet a cover sheet, basically, of our finance portal that shows you all of the due dates of all of the finance reports that are due throughout the year and the date that they were submitted or completed. Every one of them were done in a timely manner with the exception of our special education in the report. It was ready. It was due on September 1st, and it was submitted on the 24th. It was ready, and DPI knew that it was in the portal just waiting to be accepted by them because auditor's report had to be accepted first. So it was just a time issue that it was, DPI knew that it was there and they weren't concerned about it. It's just marked as delayed, so. Moving forward, under indicator eight point six point one, with EL eight point six talking about pursuing receivables in a timely manner. This, in the last couple of months, actually over the past year, we've made great improvements to our process of collecting outstanding fees. In the past year, we've started a process of doing some automated phone calls and automated emails to parents of the school district who have low or negative accounts for food services. So that's been a great help to be able to maintain a low negative balance amount. Also, with the recent hire of the business office generalist, we've been able to expedite the fee collection, the fee correction and collection process as well, and she's put into place processes to identify any incorrect fees that were applied, either through lunch or otherwise, very, very quickly, and then to correct those accounts, and then also collect on accounts with personal emails, phone calls, letters, and then working with families to set up payment plans as well. So lots of options, and enables the district to collect more fees in a more timely manner as well. And then just re-highlighting again, at the last board meeting, we talked under, with the asset management EL, we talked a lot about our contract processes, and just a reminder again, EL eight point eight talks about our, it just reiterates the requirement to bid out contracts over $25,000 and to have a sealed bid over the $150,000. So just a reiteration of our new contract process for any of those types of purchases, which then is brought to, under the superintendent's consent agenda. And I think that those were the primary ones that had anything out of the ordinary attached to them.
Any questions for Janelle on EL eight? Kelly, Bill, Mary? Barb, Julie, Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
Turn your mic on.
I can hear you.
Which one? There you go. Now, could you explain the bidding process? So you try and get three bids, correct?
Yep. So we try and get three bids unless there's not, there'd be two reasons that the Department of Instruction would say that we don't have to get three bids, and that would be as if it was an urgent or emergent situation where we couldn't get those bids. We haven't come into that situation. Or if there weren't qualified vendors in order to be able to collect three bids from. But otherwise, yes, we, in that new contract process that we have internally, under that $150,000, between $25,000 and $150,000, we have the whole process, which I did include again in this one, in this EL as well. Under indicator eight point nine point one, I listed the new cost proposal process with step number one being the administrator whose department wants to incur a new contractor cost would be to research, identifying, research and identify relevant data that supports the need of the requested new cost or contract, provide an implementation plan and timeline including future benchmarks and dates for cost or contract evaluation, create a project or contract budget, collect three competitive or sealed bids depending on the dollar amount, and identify funding sources before presenting the cost proposal to the superintendent, who would then either approve or deny according to whatever the expectation would be under the consent agenda, and then bring it to the consent agenda. So that's the process internally now.
So you just have to send out three bids? You don't have to get all three back?
We prefer, so we will actually try and send out more than three if we can find qualified vendors. So if the Department of Instruction, so like for transportation, Department of Instruction had a list of vendors, and the same thing like if you're going to contract for food services, they have a list of qualified vendors that you can send your proposal out to. There's other needs that you wouldn't have a list and that you would start by asking other districts, who is your provider? How do you feel about your provider? And then send out an RFP or a request for quote to that provider. And other ways, other times, you have, you have a list that you've either met individuals at a vendor fair, at a conference, or it's pretty easy to identify a list of potential vendors. And again, it has to be somebody that we would be qualified with, that we would be able to get references from if needed, and be able to go through those other processes of vetting if needed depending on the cost.
Okay, thank you. Sometimes you can do a request for quotes, and sometimes you may only get two back. So you may only get two bids, and then we would just put in there, here's all the people we sent quotes to, or requests. Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, thanks, Janelle. Okay, moving on to our board action agenda. Monitoring reports, we have three from our last meeting. The first one we'll deal with is E2 for Fine Arts. There were no changes to this one from the last report. The superintendent is indicating, it's not on your cover sheet, but Annette has indicated that that's making reasonable progress toward desired results. The board's decision on that is making reasonable progress, making reasonable progress with exceptions noted, or failing to make reasonable progress. And then if anybody has any comments, I guess we'll go there first. If you have any comments that you would like noted, I had not gotten any feedback on that, but if you have any comments regarding the E2 Fine Arts report, this would be the time that we capture that. Comments to note? All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the E2 academic achievement monitoring report as making reasonable progress towards achieving the desired result.
Second. Motion by Julie, a second by Mike, to accept E2 Fine Arts as reasonable progress. No exceptions. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to E2 for Phi Ed. I did have feedback for board comments on that, and you have a nice little summary in blue ink, sorry, I was out of black, to acknowledge that we exceed the, I heard multiple board members comment about exceeding the required number of minutes in Phi Ed across particularly K8. So that comment is there. Anybody have any objections to those comments being noted on the cover sheet? No? I'll take that as consensus. All right, now I'll take a motion regarding E2 for Phi Ed and Health. Same options, reasonable progress, reasonable progress with exceptions, or failing to make progress. What would your choice be?
I move we accept E2 Physical Ed. What was that first choice?
Reasonable progress.
Reasonable progress.
I'll second that.
A motion by Bill, a second by Julie, to accept E2 for Phi Ed and Health as making reasonable progress toward the desired results. Last chance for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, last one is EL nine, Asset Protection Monitoring Report. And again, on that little handout, you have comments regarding nine point two, which was noted as not in compliance. And I guess I'm looking for a consensus on that. Basically, it says we acknowledge that we received a recommendation that the board review the provisions of nine point two about unbounded persons and access to district funds in excess of insurance policies. Our comments there, direct that back to the board for review. Comments, concerns?
Have we heard back from the lawyer on that one?
Governance Committee will have information regarding that. I'll let you know when Governance Committee can meet and decide how we want to deal with that.
Okay.
How's that? Stay tuned. We need to dispose of the monitoring report first. So we'll take care of the monitoring report, and then Governance Committee can decide how we're going to review and any changes we're going to recommend. All right, so those comments will be added. So then we're looking for a motion to accept it as, because this is an EL, in compliance, not in compliance, or in compliance with noted exceptions.
I move we accept EL nine as in compliance, subject to the comment being made.
Motion by Kelly, a second by Mike, to accept EL, what do we have, EL nine as in compliance.
In compliance, yeah, in compliance.
In compliance.
And we're adding the comment, that we're aware that the...
Yep. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed to accepting it as in compliance, because I do have to vote. So motion carries. Pam, I will get you these two comments to be added to those cover sheets before I sign All right, moving on. Superintendent's report. School safety stuff. This is part two, part two of our ongoing work.
Okay. If the board is okay, I'm going to take it just a little out of order here. So we have school safety and security, and Sergeant Ward has been waiting patiently over there for like the last two hours. So I'm going to talk about the school site assessment report first. So if we could have Troy and Sergeant Ward as part of the Act 143, actually, we need to do a school site assessment report, and this is a yearly, I believe now, report that we need to present to the board. And so Troy and Sergeant Ward actually walked our site, all of our sites, and they have a summer report that they'd like to present to the board, some recommendations, I believe, and maybe just some highlights of that report. So if you would, just go ahead.
Sure. As you guys know, Act 143 became the law of the land in March. Act 143 requires the school district to do annual safety and security assessment. I actually had the pleasure in August of going down to Sun Prairie through the Wisconsin School Safety Coordinators Association and doing a one full-day training on doing a safety and security audit. Act 143 requires us to do this walkthrough with law enforcement. Sergeant Ward was kind enough to be the walking buddy of mine for the three sites. And overall, we really observed some good practices, but there were some things that we would like to see changed in the future. Would you like to expand on that?
Yeah, so through the walkthroughs, I mean, a lot of the stuff we understand through the grants that the school received, progress is being made, but it's not perfect yet. And to say that I think any school is perfect would be very hard, because we understand that you have to balance the learning with the safety, with the environment, with access and everything else. A lot of the schools were very good when it came to the entrance. They were all secured. You had to get buzzed in. Some schools were better about asking who it was, some just buzzed the door. I know that's already been addressed with most of them. You know, the elementary school, you get buzzed in, you're into the school, that's being corrected with the funds that were obtained. High school and middle school, you have to access through the office, which is obviously a good practice to begin with. The schools are starting with the Raptor system, which is going to help identify people coming in and out, which is better than just somebody signing a signature, getting a badge, and being able to access the school. But we have to also, I think, take it that step further of finding a way to monitor who's still in the school after X amount of time. Right now, it's just you check in, you check out, but there's no way to monitor how long you've been in there. So being able to look at some of that. You know, walking through with Troy, a lot of the safety and security stuff comes down to cooperation and understanding, whether it's parents, whether it's students, whether it's staff or teachers, maintenance, whatever it may be. So, you know, students following the see something, say something rule is obviously important. That's where we get 99% of our information is from a student telling us what's going on. Staff making sure that they're following rules that are either in place or that are going to be in place as far as keeping doors locked and secured during teaching hours, making sure that doors are shut and locked, and not just shut or just locked. Through the walkthroughs, we had a handful in each school that had a classroom full of students, and the doors were wide open, which is now in violation of the new Act 143 requirements. So making sure that staff are trained, I think, is a big thing, and you know, the theme of tonight is money, so it's, can we put forth enough to have another one or two in services? Can you put it towards additional cameras? Can you put it towards locking systems or monitoring systems? And all of that, again, has to, I think, be balanced between, you know, your financials and maintaining that conducive learning environment, but also keeping a safe school environment. Parents need to understand, and I know Troy has experienced this, we experience it all the time, whether it's K9 walkthroughs with the high school, or, you know, random alarms. Parents get upset when you run these drills, and they need to understand that they need to be done, they're an important part of this security for the school. So having the parents understand that we're not going to tell you when we're doing it, we're not going to tell you what the drill is, is very important, as well as running the drills, which again is in a requirement of the Act 143 to a degree now. I know all of you guys have, or I think you have, the assessment report that we did. It's a 16-page report that for this one, knowing that improvements are still being made with the funds that were obtained, we did one report for all three schools. The yearly reports will now be one report per school, so we know exactly where each school is sitting, what needs corrected and what doesn't. So overall, I think the schools are doing very well. We just need to make sure that we keep going in that direction and making the improvements that need to be made, and that we keep advancing where we need to advance to make sure we can balance that safety and security with the learning and being able to keep the students safe over there, so.
One thing I will add as to the form that you guys have, that is a form that was given to us through the class that I attended through the Safety Coordinators Association. It has a couple of spots in there where it says to required drills, or we are doing everything that we're required to under law. They have a little different standard than what the Office of School Safety does right now. So if you've noticed any discrepancies there, we're following the law.
So we meet the requirements, it's just some areas have a higher standard?
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Got it. Got it. Got it. Okay, questions about the school assessment? Kelly, Bill, Mary, Mike?
I'd like to ask one. Sergeant Ward and Troy, our main entryways to our schools and the entryway to the administrative offices, does that look good to you? Are we in good shape there?
I think that there's some progress that could still be made. I think that some of those conversations need to be in either a closed session or with Annette, or with Troy, or in a smaller group, because it does go towards the actual security of the schools. Again, I think that for where they're at with what they have, they're doing an okay job. And the elementary school, I know, is on the docket to be improved to get it to that point, but there are certainly still some things that could be improved upon yet to make it better. But again, I think that's something that needs to be discussed outside of this particular meeting.
Thanks.
Julie?
Questions?
No questions.
So I want to say thank you. Thank you to you and your predecessor, Chief Maester, and the whole Police Department staff. When I went through this questionnaire, there were a lot of things in here where I went. We talked about that as being an area of in-service training for staff. We talked about that being a focus area for staff, for administrators. You talked to us about, oh, and I'm not going to get the name right, FEMA training that you all did. There's been a lot of time, a lot of energy committed to do the things that are expected here before, I think, any of us knew this was coming. It's work that's been going, it's been work in progress for three, four, five years. And the Police Department has been a huge help in facilitating some of those trainings. So thank you. We've said thank you before, but I'll say it again because you're here. But we appreciate that partnership with you, and surely appreciate the work that's done, not only for us to be prepared to help you in the event of a community situation, but the same thing if we have a situation, that you're prepared and familiar with our facilities and our student and staff needs. So on behalf of all of us, thank you for that, for sure.
Absolutely.
And calendar-wise, I think we've decided that the timing of this on the AD calendar would normally come about now, the December-January type of timeframe.
Yep.
Works well?
Yep.
We'll revise that.
It does, I mean, it gives you that time when the beginning of school starts, because really, the safety and security assessment has to be done with kids in the building. And like Sergeant Ward said, you know, moving on in the future, doing those more in-depth by building versus all three at once, will take a little bit more time, so I think December is good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Do you want to backtrack?
Yep. So then we have Chet, who did a lot of the FEMA training with me. Chet and I sat through hours and hours of FEMA training and webinars, and Troy. And so Chet and Troy did a lot of the Department of Justice work through the templates for the individual school drills. And so while the principals were in charge of their individual school drills, Chet and Troy really planned, planned those school drills, and so they're going to talk to you tonight about the school drills that were submitted to you. These have to be submitted to the board 30 days after the drills. So that's why you have these each tonight in front of you. So go ahead and talk about those, if you will.
Okay, so you guys all received the summary from each individual building. We performed the school threat drills the week of November 26th, started CES on the 26th, then CMS on the 27th, and CHS on the 28th. All the drills were lockdown drills. We made sure they were building appropriate, so we didn't do anything in CES that would scare the kids. But they were implemented by the principals, Chet and myself, along with the deans of students, and we did have some counselors that participated in doing the walkthrough. The drills were quick, and they were successful. Staff and students were quiet, they performed well. We did find some small things to tweak. I would say that, like Officer Ward said, it's not really something we want to give out in an open session setting, keeping safety and security in mind. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No. Like Troy said, you know, there were a couple of things that we ran across, but we're in process of addressing those issues. Again, nothing we should really be talking about now, but we will stay on top of that and continue to test those systems as we go forward as well. Council support was there as well during all the drills, so those were the key pieces, I'd say.
Questions on those reports? Again, they're required to come to us as really informational pieces. We don't need, well, yeah, we do have to accept them under the superintendent's consent agenda, to acknowledge that we've received those reports in order to be compliant. Correct.
Questions? To my right? Julie, Mike? Left? Thanks again for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. All right, next on my superintendent's report, you received in your packet the school calendars for the 2019, 20, and 2021 school years, and then also some explanations on where we received feedback for those calendars. Lots of surveys. We also worked with the support staff representatives on how they would like to receive additional training time. They also wanted to, they wanted to talk about additional days, actually, workdays that they wanted added to their schedules, because they really felt that they did not have enough time at the beginning of the year. So Lisa and I talked with them, support staff representatives, not just workdays at the beginning of the year, to be able to work with, like, case managers for the ESPs, but also time to work and setting up times to get to know students, looking over, like, IEPs, et cetera. But they also wanted throughout the year additional time to be able to train, because they really felt like professional development was important for them. So we looked at that. I did surveys, sent out surveys for feedback from students, staff, parents. Administration were able to also take that. So we had an original survey, and then I did a more extensive survey with just staff. Ninety-seven staff actually took that survey, so it was really well, a lot of feedback from staff about it. And then we sent the drafts out for the staff just this last week, and said, please take a look at this and send me any feedback that you might have in regards to it. I was actually really pleased with the amount of feedback that I got over the weekend. They were actually very thankful for a lot of the amount of, from the original survey that I, and what we were able to actually incorporate into the calendars from their feedback. They were very thankful about. So we see that you moved Parent-Teacher Conference to earlier, in the month, because instead of mid-month, or because it always kind of got to the end of the month. We really appreciated that. Or, we actually got a spring break? Both, really? Parents really wanted that? Or, we got the Monday after Easter off? Things like that. You were able to incorporate that many minutes into? You built in two snow days? Just, you know, things like that. So they were really very appreciative of the things that they saw in the calendar for both years. So these are the two school years. I'd be willing to take any questions if you have questions in regards to them.
Herb? Julie? Herb?
Did you, um...
Turn your mic.
I thought it was on.
There you go.
Did you get any feedback about the Friday graduation date? I know that that was, a lot of parents talked about that.
I haven't.
I've had very few parents actually say that they didn't like it. I'm sorry. Sorry.
I've actually had very, I think I've only had, in a couple of years, maybe two or three parents say they didn't like it, and I've had, I don't know, a lot that love it, so.
Okay.
Very few.
Because I've heard differently, but that's, okay. Okay, just wanted to know. And if, we can always revisit it, too. We can certainly do that. Okay.
No questions?
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Of course you do.
Does DOT have a hard start date for 89? Route 89 in front of the school?
They don't.
They don't?
No, no, not yet. So they were, okay, so if I remember that correctly, because I know you guys were at that meeting.
Yep.
They were 40% proposal, at 40% proposal, or something like that. So if they, when they get to that, I have the name of the project manager. When they get to 60% proposal, she's gonna, they're gonna have another meeting. If something were to occur, and let's say you approve this, and something were to occur, we can come back to this, and we can say, all right, they're gonna close that road, and we can go to the state, and we can do something different with the calendar if we need to address the idea of we want to have an earlier start date or ending date or something because of the road issue.
Because it's my understanding that they want, they being DOT, want to start the project as soon as we finish one school year, and hopefully have it done before we start the next one.
They need a four-month window.
But they need a window that's a little longer than what we've got right now.
Correct, correct. So we can always adjust if we have to.
You know, I do have one question.
Sure.
Can you clarify, because, what is there, 14 colors in that key? What are the school year ending dates with the two built-in school days for, it looks like 1920 is June 4th, tentatively?
Correct.
And then 2021, is it the 31st? No, that's a holiday.
Nope, it's the third.
It's the third?
Correct.
It's a different color than the year before.
Correct. It's, there's not an early release on that day.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I appreciate the parent version of this. Because when this goes through 1,200 copies, it's really hard to read on your fridge when it starts to fade, so. I really like the parent abbreviated copy, because it's my quick reference, and my sixth grader can figure it out.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Much easier.
And can I just celebrate fewer late starts?
And you know, I had a question that...
It's been this trade-off for so many years, and so I, on behalf of working parents who do some crazy things to accommodate that, thank you. So, and thank you to parents for completing the survey.
Yes.
It looks like we changed the early release time also, is that correct?
Yes.
We increased the minutes there from 12:30 to 1:15 on those.
Correct, and that's what is able to allow us to add minutes, so that we had that built-in time. And we still have, our high school is the building that has the, we're still, I gave some cushion, but it's tight with the high school. So we have two days. We have two days. Everybody's looking at us. It's not Jake's balls.
Any other calendar questions?
All right.
Okay.
Moving on.
All right, so I want to give you an update where we're at with the indicators and interpretations for E4. Lisa and I are working really hard at creating those, and we will be prepared to bring back to the board the interpretation and indicators for E4 at the second meeting, or the first meeting in January for the board, so that you can approve those at the second meeting in January. So we will be prepared for those. And then the final thing I have is for human resources. We had a retirement request from Connie Herman, who works in the district office. She is our, basically, online registr, she's our registrar in the district, and she does online registration and that type of thing. We had a request come in last week, and her request will be for December 31st. So she will be done at the end of the calendar year. And so we'll be sad to see Connie go, but she is ready to retire. And so that request is in your board packet, and also in employment of Sue Reese at the high school library as an ESP. And that is the superintendent's report.
Moving on to the board consent agenda? Looking for a motion?
Superintendent Consent Agenda. Yeah, you're out of order.
Oh, sorry. I put a check mark in the wrong spot. Superintendent Consent Agenda. I'll tell you, entertain a motion.
I move we accept the superintendent's consent agenda presented.
A second.
Motion by Bill, a second by Mary, to accept the superintendent's consent agenda as posted. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll do the board consent agenda.
I move we accept the board consent agenda as posted.
Second.
Motion by Mary, a second by Bill, to accept the board consent agenda as posted. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to board management, just one quick update to, a reminder to Mary and Mike, that your paperwork is due on the 21st to Pam. What's that?
If they're not running, otherwise...
Right, non-candidacy is due to Pam on the 21st. And anybody with interest in running can contact Pam Zander for the appropriate paperwork. So, all right, at this time, the board will quick do some calendar planning and our meeting assignments. Administrators are welcome to depart. You can go now, Corey. All right, thanks, have a good night.